Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Douglas School Committee to order on September 3rd at 6:30. Please rise for the President of Allegiance.
Hi, President of Allegiance. We're with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'd like to read the Douglas Public Schools' mission statement. The Douglas Public Schools offer a diverse learning experience that meets the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all of our students. We provide a safe, supportive, and challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of our students. Thank you so much. We have two student representatives, Zoe Musgrove and Chris Baloo. Can you please come up and talk to us tonight?
Hello. My name is Zoe Musgrove and I'm here with Chris Baloo and we are eighth graders and members of last year's Student Council. We are excited to be here to tell you all about the amazing things that are going on at the middle school so far this year.
On the sports and extracurricular front, the middle school is off to be a great start. With over seventy-five middle schoolers participating in a sport between the varsity, junior varsity, and middle school level, we have already had some successes. Starting at the middle school, our cross-country team is growing by the day with almost thirty runners, including Zoe and myself. We're also very excited to have our very first middle school volleyball team this year. With sixteen sixth and seventh graders, they are ready for their first game tomorrow against Bay Path's freshman team. The game will be at 3:30 at the high school. Up at the high school, we also have many middle schoolers doing great things at the JV and even varsity level.
Student Council is also gearing up for the year. Nomination papers went out today and our election will occur next week on Tuesday.
With only four days of school down, we've already jumped right into things. With the new win block, students have had this opportunity to get themselves organized and prepared for this year. Many classes have also been focused on fun SEL activities which are giving us the chance to get to know our new teachers.
Down in the sixth grade, the new middle schoolers are learning the basics of Douglas Middle School, like how to open their lockers, how to follow a rotating schedule, and where all of their classes are located. I'm sure in no time, they'll be ready to go. In every class, they have started to learn the expectations and rules of being a middle schooler. On Tuesday, the sixth grade participate in their first community meeting where Mr. O'Brien and Mrs. Sullivan went over all the important rules. The seventh and eighth graders had their community meetings as well.
In the seventh grade, things are starting a little bit faster. After a few days of getting to know each other and some organization work, classes are starting in full swing. Math calendars and summer reading are being turned in. Labs are being completed in science class. In ELA, they're creating class rules, and in history, they're looking at ancient artifacts.
In eighth grade, we got to work right away. The first day of school, we rotated through all of our classes, getting important things done in each class. We opened our lockers, got our binders set up and organized, joined Google classrooms and more. Things that took us all day in sixth grade are now done within ten minutes. We're excited to have a new class in the eighth grade where we learn the most important question of all, Pedro es ar elbow no.
Thank you for your time. We're looking forward to having a fantastic year.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions or follow-ups for our guests?
Almost.
Almost. You don't get off quite that easy.
Thank you.
Well, I thank you so much for coming in and talking so eloquently. Thank you again.
Have a great year.
Anybody here for public comment? If you could come up, state your name and your address, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm Scott Shay, Seventy-one Old Farm Road, Douglas. Not sure if I'm restricted to three, four, or five minutes, so I got this down to two minutes and fifty seconds.
You're good. You're the only one here, so...
All right, so good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Scott Shay, and my family and I are proud to be active members of this community. I coach football for the NU Bulldogs, right where I'm headed at the conclusion of this practice, even though he sustained an injury last night on his hand. My wife is the head coach of the ten U Bulldogs Cheerleaders, who is practicing right now in a Douglas Middle School gym. We care deeply about this town, the district, and the families in it. The purpose of my comment tonight is simple. I'm asking for the committee to revisit the section in the elementary school handbook regarding who must be present when a child gets off the bus. I'm asking for this one area to be reconsidered so it can better serve the taxpayers and families like mine. Other districts nearby, including larger cities, allow elementary school students to get off the bus without anyone present, so this is not unusual nor unprecedented. The current language in the handbook states that an adult must be present for anyone fifth grade and below when getting off the bus. There is a waiver available for fifth graders only, allowing them to get off the bus without an adult. My ask is simple. Allow that my fifth grader take my second grader home without an adult. As the parent of these two children, I know they're equally responsible and mature enough to make this short walk in the days where we need that flexibility. A one-size-fits-all approach is not appropriate in this case. Schools are made up of many family styles with many different circumstances. This is not a state law and it's not a DESE requirement. This is Douglas doing it because they want to, and maybe the committee has never been approached on this, which is why I'm bringing it up tonight. To help make this possible, I'm more than willing to remove any liability from the school or the district by signing a waiver, having it notarized, or doing whatever paperwork is required. This is not about placing the risk on the school. It's about parents, giving parents the ability to make decisions that fit their family's needs. In our specific case, our children's bus stop is one driveway away in a cul-de-sac community, not on busy streets or blind corners like South Street or without sidewalks. Last year, I watched a fifth grader and second grader from two houses down walk past my house day after day, getting off the bus without an adult present. On several occasions, that younger second grader got off the bus without her older sibling nor an adult. Both instances prompted me to call the school, asking how to accomplish this for my family. I was told the same thing both times, that they were grandfathered in, and it was reserved for fifth graders. When referencing the second grader getting off alone, I was told the same, grandfathered, but no further details were able to be provided. I also want to share a personal factor that makes this especially challenging for us. I actively serve in the United States military day-to-day, and I'm often called away on short notice. That already places strain on my wife, who manages everything at Home Line Garden. Unfortunately, I've experienced difficulty with this district, specifically at the elementary school, when explaining military-related hardships, and I'm not sure whether that's been the case. On days when she is running just five minutes late from work, this handbook language creates unnecessary stress, not because our children cannot manage a short walk, but because the policy will not allow them to. We are not asking to leave our children unattended for hours or to bypass safety just for convenience. We are asking to remove this unnecessary burden from a family that had already sacrificed a great deal in service to this country and this community. I understand that this district policy changes take time, which is why I highlighted that this section is in the elementary school handbook. I'm not sure if that's truly district policy, but in my case, I'm asking that time be of the essence, as I've recently received orders to go on a temporary assignment very soon. If there's a way to revisit this, and if the committee concurs, implementing that change as soon as possible would be ideal. I'll follow up in greater detail via email, as I know I'm restricted on public comment time. I look forward to a resolution that lets parents be parents while also keeping the school and its practices safe. Thank you for your time, and now we're off to football practice.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Bulldogs!
Yeah, go Bulldogs!
Anybody else here for public comment? Seeing that there are none, any old business we need to discuss?
There isn't.
Moving on to new business in the superintendent's report, please.
All right, so welcome to the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'm going to turn it over to the principals and the coordinators and other directors in a minute, but again, great start to the school year. Been inside classrooms, I think I said it when I was here in August, or was Zoom not here, but thank you to everyone who made such a smooth start to the school year. Kids got off the buses, lunches were served, kids were in classes, books were available, so it's a testament to the hard work and the dedication of our principals, our support staff, our custodians, and everyone associated with getting the school ready for kids in September. So again, great start. It's been the same thing I've said every year, and it's been awesome. We really, again, minor things in the road, parents not knowing which, you know, moving campuses, not knowing which entrance to go in, but just your regular typical growing pains, and every day it's getting better and better. So I'm going to turn it over to the principals. They don't know the order they're getting called up in, so it's always fun. One person knows who's going last, but we will start today with Ms. Sosha.
Woo-hoo!
That's a shock.
Would you like to go second to last?
This is good.
Welcome back, everyone. So the first two PD days, we had safety training for the staff on fire drills, the weather emergency locations in the building, the lockdown procedures. Officer Brad, Officer Adam, and Desi Vega reviewed all of the procedures that we have in place right now. They answered all the questions. Teachers were reminded to keep their door handles locked at all times so that it's easy to just close the door and know that it's locked in an emergency, and also to, if they see something, to say something. So that was the huge takeaway that morning. We also had Kelly Manning from the fire department, and she provided training on stop the bleed and choking. And our keynote speaker stressed happiness and well-being for our staff and ourselves. So the primary school's going to start something new, see how it goes. Feel-good Fridays, where staff members text each other and colleagues in the building, and either to give them a compliment or to thank them, and we thought we were starting this coming Friday, and Friday on our day off, I got two nice compliments and thank yous.
Is that why you texted me on Friday? Say yes.
It was nice, and it felt good to get thanked for something in something noticed that you do, so that should be a nice thing for ourselves, to keep ourselves healthy. We opened last Wednesday with eighty-five first graders. They had their supply drop-off the day before so that they were ready. They knew where the classrooms were, they had met their teacher, and it made that morning so smooth. They just marched themselves right in to the building and little assistance, so they were off and running. Preschool-held orientation last week and started yesterday with twenty-three in pre-K three and thirty-nine in pre-K four, for a total of sixty-two preschool students. So that's huge. And again, the orientation was Thursday, start on Tuesday. Very few tears, mostly from moms, but not too many from parents. And one parent that, you know, the child had a difficult time, they emailed the teacher and said, "That was on us. We know. We stood at the door too long, and then once you start talking and they keep hugging longer and longer, you know you're in trouble." So they said they'll do better next time. Kindergarten, we had screening last week, orientation yesterday. They had their little bus rides yesterday, and we started with seventy-seven students, and they have the class of twenty-thirty-eight. So, you like that number, right? So it was really smooth. It was probably the best opening that we had, that there were so few issues, so few. So having the orientation, supply drop-off, and meeting the teacher, it just reduces all that anxiety from the kids. They came in, most of them were like, "Yeah, see you later, Mom," you know. So it was great. And I wanted to thank my staff for being patient, kind, and flexible, because it takes everybody to do that. Any questions?
I am so glad to hear that there were little tears, not big tears, right? And like, again, it's a testament to how you've structured the school and setup and communication with your staff and the team that we have. And so, big shout-out to the custodial staff, because I know that they had to do some extra work over on your side of the woods, right? So huge shout-out to them, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
I'm in the middle.
You're in trouble. We just start. The week before school started, we had a kickoff twenty-five for incoming sixth grade students, to let them get the jitters out before the start of school. That always goes well. We explained to both the parents and the students the changes that go on in the middle schooler's brain, and why they might not act like they're wonderful little fifth or fourth grader before them, and they're in for a ride, especially if it's their first child going through middle school. Through the hard work of the staff in the spring and throughout the summer, we've had an exceptionally smooth start. I was very encouraged and heard a lot of positive feedback from the staff. Class sizes, we got a hundred and four sixth graders. That has fluctuated up and down, move-ins and move-outs and move-ins, but a hundred and four, very doable. Eighty-four in the seventh grade and ninety-four in the eighth. So decent class sizes. We introduced our win block, and the teachers just took the ball and ran with it of what to do. So as I believe Zoe said earlier, they're working on their SEL skills, their executive functioning skills, team-building skills. If you look on Instagram, there's a nice picture of one of the seventh grades. We kind of moved the morning circle. Win block takes place right after lunch, and we do morning circle time at that point. Gets the kids settled down a little bit later in the lunches, but the day flies by extremely fast. All in all, we're off to a wonderful start, and the custodians did a tremendous job over the summer, and it was gleaming, and it just takes a lot of teamwork to get it done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, through the chair.
Absolutely.
Ms. Sosha mentioned revisiting safety protocols. I'm wondering if that same thing happened in the middle school.
We did that as well with the same crew.
Yep.
I try not to be redundant. It's tough in the middle. You're always coming after the same thing. We did it well. We had our first fire drill, and we spiced it up a little bit by doing, having it done during passing time, and everybody reacted appropriately and got to where they were going. Our time was good. Kelly Manning complimented us on that. The staff will ongoing safety training all year long on what comes up and what they do. Teachers love being told what to do, and there's so many think-on-your-feet moments when it comes to that. You get to give them permission to use their brain and think on their feet.
So you can add a new wrinkle to it. I know, so we had, when we had new staff coming, we had Brett and Desi talk to new staff about ALICE and safety protocols. We had Kelly come and do stop the bleed and choking. Brett and Desi also went to all four buildings and talked about it. Next week, I believe we're doing ALICE drills in all four buildings. So do you want to talk a little bit about what the scenario looks like in your building?
Yeah, so we're going to work on this year, the reunification, and a lot of districts I've been at throughout my career, they focus on the first five minutes, but a lot of the work happens after that, and what needs to be done, and what we need to be ready for. So we are going to be relocated off-campus. That's the drills we're working on and focusing on this year, so everybody knows what to expect. And it's just a lot of reminders to folks.
Awesome. Again, shout-out to the fire department for coming over and helping us, also well as the police department from the town side. We really appreciate helping set up the, make the schools as safe as possible for us as we start this new school year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ringette.
Evening.
Welcome to a new school year.
Woo-hoo!
Very exciting. So I'm going to, you're going to hear some repetitive things. First few days, we had our new student orientation the Friday before opening. It's also the day we release schedules on a yearly basis. We do that intentionally. We have less initial complaints. Usually that way, if I'm not with my best friend, I'm not with my best friend, why can't I be with, you know? So we don't have so much, if we don't give them enough time to work through that minutia right away, then the counseling department's usually a little bit lighter the first couple of days of students wanting to be with their friends. So we held new student orientation on that Friday. The Mrs. Ryan and the peer leaders put on a terrific experience for our new students. A lot of fun stuff, fun activities, on top of getting into the, into the school, walking around with student schedules, answering a bunch of questions. So we started off with that. Obviously, very similarly, our first two days with staff, we went over a ton of things. We went over safety protocols, very similar as the other schools with Desi and with Officer Filoni. We also had Nurse Mel present on our medical emergency team and other aspects of kind of working through the safety process that way.
Can you talk a little bit about the medical emergency response team, we call them the MER teams? Can you talk a little bit about what that is, what that looks like, and that whole process?
So, well, thankfully, we actually haven't, in three years, we haven't had to use one.
Which is awesome.
Which is great. However, so every year, we put together a medical emergency response team of various people around the building and in various places around the building should something ever occur. We have our team members, which is really led by myself and Mr. Vega as the building leaders, you know, if we're there on site, you know, we become in charge, and so on and so forth. If we're not there on site, the first person there is in charge, and then they start working through that process. Ms. Gosha, our nurse, really does a great job of highlighting every little detail as to what each person's responsibility is throughout that whole process, and we highlight, again, almost sections of the building where we have staff that are capable and able to do interventions should we have a medical emergency come up. Our counseling staff is on the spot. Our, you know, again, you never know what type of medical emergency it's going to be, so you always want to make sure you have all your bases covered. Everybody knows that if they find it to be significant, that they have the right to call 911 right away, and then we'll pick up the pieces as we go, because number one is, you know, student safety, and to make sure that they are taken care of, so.
And part of the team is like relaying information to the office as to what happens. You know, obviously, when the ambulance has come, we direct them to the nearest door, and our doors are locked. You want someone at the door to greet the ambulance, to get the emergency responders into the building as quickly as possible. So it's deploying people to the right doors to greet the emergency responders for it. So it's a whole slew of things for those teams. So we try to do two or three drills a year, just to make sure that people know where to go if there's, if there's an emergency.
Yep. You want me to elaborate anymore, or move on?
We've got nothing.
Just a quick question. So I would assume because Nurse Mel outlines what to do medically, is there outlines with the counselors on what to do, because it's medical mental health planning?
Right. So Mrs. Ryan is kind of like the point person for that. As, I don't know, if you've ever had dealings with Mrs. Ryan, she's...
All the time. She's wonderful.
She is wonderful, isn't she?
Yes, she is.
So, so she kind of runs point on that. However, Mrs. O'Brien, Mrs. Cappener, they, the three of them work so symbiotically together every day, all day, and they know their students so well that should one not be available, the other could step in. And again, we're talking an emergency situation, so sometimes you just never know what's going to happen there. So yeah, so there's a, it's kind of a ladder process, if you will.
No, thank you. I know a lot of people don't talk a lot about the mental health part of those plans, and those are extremely important.
And I'll be honest, I think we're more likely to see, if we ever had a medical-type emergency here, it would probably more likely be on the mental health side versus something more physical or more of an ailment type. So, yep, exactly, exactly. So I'll try to skip up a little bit to our first fire drill. We held our first fire drill, just like everybody else. First three days, we had our fire drill. It was nice to get to talk to Kelly Manning, Deputy Fire Chief. She's wonderful. She works with us very well, and we talked about some various things. I know the high school will be looking to add an additional stair chair soon. We're just going to kind of, we were going to, the fire department and the high school's going to talk to see if there's any available that they might have, that they might be able to, you know, work with us on, and then provide everybody here with training on those. So, so we are looking into something like that, and if that falls... So we are looking into something like that, and if that falls through, I'll be looking slightly over to the business department to bring it up as a potential need. So we have, you know, you go through a fire drill, you know, they decided to throw a wrench in it and block the main entrance, so that was a lot of fun to see kind of what happened after that. You know, like any situation, everybody made it counter for, and we were able to successfully evacuate, which was nice. But yeah, as we do with fire drills, things do pop up, and we do want to make sure we have those in place. As far as PD goes, working with staff, Pam Garamone was excellent. She, very positive message that she gave to everybody in the district. I recommend her to pretty much anybody. Every year, when I meet with staff after that, we go over some nuts and bolts, things of the regular updates and things like that. But one thing I do every year is we talk about focus points. So this year, I usually only give one every year. This year, I gave them three. This year, I gave them three. And not because they need them in their practice necessarily, but it's because sometimes you need to be reminded. So this year, I wanted to focus on practice. I wanted to remind the staff that teaching is a practice, administrative work is a practice. Things happen, okay? If new rules come out, if Desi comes down with new things that we have to do, then we have to adjust to those new things. Hence, it's a practice, just like lawyers practice with new laws that come out, doctors practice with new, with new techniques, new medications, things like that. We practice. It's okay to practice. It's okay to take an academic risk and try something new in your class and see if it works. Even if you've been a veteran teacher and you've got things down pat, it's okay to maybe seat your students in a horseshoe. It's okay to maybe, you know, let the students work in groups or sit on the floor and work together on a project. It's okay to try different things. So I wanted to emphasize that first point. The second focus point I had was teaching and learning. We do have a lot of teaching going on here. Our students have responded fairly well in various surveys about the fact that they are learning some things, and that the teachers are well-versed in their skills. But sometimes we might not have all of the learning kind of been placed. So with that in mind, and with, you know, things kind of hovering around the state about, you know, cellphone policies coming down next year or so, I wanted to make a focus point on the part that student engagement is very important, and I reiterated to the teachers that while they're teaching, while they're going through the lessons, while the students are practicing, have them without their phones, have them without their earbuds, have them without these things. If the student needs to listen to music, play your own music. It's okay, you know? Students are allowed to listen to other things other than their favorite songs, and they might get a new one. That's how I discovered Fleetwood Mac, and when I was in my study hall in high school. But these are things that we want to focus on, because it's good practice to have the students, you know, engaged while the instruction is going on. And something tells me that, that hasn't been consistent across the board, so we're calling it a focus point this year. And the last one was mastery.
I was going to say, I can tell you on good authority, I've heard from multiple high schools about how tough the teachers are being on this cellphone thing, and this law hasn't even passed yet. I've heard that from a good amount of them.
Well, that's good.
That was my response.
That's good. Not all learning happens this way, right? Not all learning happens at your fingertips. The last thing we want to focus on this year is mastery. We're going to talk about that, I'm sure, more in future meetings, but, but that's kind of our three focus points for this upcoming year. I know I've gone pretty much over my two and plus minutes.
A minute or two.
But you know what?
Yeah.
I think Cindy was still longer, so. However, any questions?
Through the chair.
Absolutely.
Not so much a question, but a statement. I love the focus points. I think those are focus points that anybody in the community, ourselves, we could take into our practice. I think it's a great idea, again, to practice. You know, you want to encourage being a lifelong learner, like that's why we're all here, and there is no better way than for them to master it and to show the students. So I'm very excited to see and hear about how it goes.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll see, fingers crossed. So, but yeah, it's a, it's going to be a recurring theme this year, so.
Anybody else? The chair?
Absolutely. I second what Julia says, because all of those are really relevant, and I think that they're on point with what Desi's trying to accomplish as well with some of their directives that are coming out from the state level. And myself and my own practice, I see it a lot, is like, we think we have engagement, but really what we have is compliance. And so kids learn best when they're, when they're all in, and they're immersed in the learning, so that I think that's the one that I'm most happy to hear about.
Any nails?
I just am so excited. When my high schooler came home and talked about MYCAP, I was actually really excited.
I ran out of time before I could talk anything.
Really excited. He's like, Mom, I'm going to learn how to have money and not be in debt like everybody else in America. And I was like, glad you're excited about that.
Yeah, so this year, we did start that earlier this year, so we kind of met together at the beginning with the, honestly, I have six amazing people that kind of run it for me, that, so they deserve all the credit in the world. But we talked about, I said, what, what worked, what didn't work, and they said, at the very end of the year, trying to squeeze that in, in the beginning of May, middle of May, when the seniors are checking out-
You already lost them.
-was not beneficial. So I said, okay, let's try for the beginning of each term. So that's where we're aiming, is the first week after the term ends, that's when we'll do it. So we did it first week of school this week, this year. We'll do it first week of term two, first week of term three, and first week of term four, and that's where our scheduling is, so.
I'm just going to say that someone in the community, maybe someone that lives in my home, was like, how come the parents don't like get to go in and volunteer and talk to the kids about their careers and stuff? And I was like, well, they have the MYCAP program, and I think they already do that, actually, so-
We have some things-
-very excited to hear that there's things in place, and I know that at our retreat this year, we talked about parent volunteerism, so I think that particular place is a great place for these kids to get to hear what people in their community actually do. So I encourage you to reach out to the high school parents and see who might lend a hand.
That is on the agenda.
I figured.
That is 100% on the agenda, so. Anything else?
Well, I'm elated to hear how the high school is going, the kickoff of the year, people knowing how to, our students knowing how to budget, you know? I'm going to count it, so, you know, it's near and dear to me, you know? And so, again, kudos, keep up the good work. Shout out again to police and fire, as well as to our entire staff, the custodial staff too, as the high school looks beautiful as we're in it, so kudos again.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Haynes.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'll try to keep it to two minutes. That was like two minutes of NBA basketball. Two minutes left in the game, and 40 minutes later, you're still going to the fridge. Anyway, hi, hi. So you did a great job. Tough follow. Anyway, I just want to say, the elementary school, we're off to a great start. I really feel, I'm excited about it. We're fully staffed, we're ready to tackle the year. We had two great PD days, but they were very different, right? The first day, we had this very inspirational, positive speaker, you know, but very practical, you know? They'd sometimes they'll talk, and it's just, that's not me, I can't, but it was very practical, and I think it really resonated with the staff. It was well-received. And then what happened is that after that, we went back as a, as a staff, and we, we actually did a little bit of a, we called it the staff brag, where, where staff was kind of talking about the great things that happened in their lives, there were babies, grandbabies, there were, you know, weddings and whatnot, it was very positive. And then the staff went up and they did their training, and they set up their classrooms, and they kind of had their time. They all wanted to gather as teams. So that was the first day. Second day started, well, first of all, the first day started with our PTO, so we were very fortunate, our PTO, they had coffee and pastries for everyone, and just did a nice little opportunity to introduce kind of who they were and how they can support the team, which was great. But then it, it took a little, little different tone from there, because then what we did is we dove right into the health and safety, right? And I really want to thank Officer Brett, Officer Adam, Vice Principal Vega, and then also Mel, Nurse Brundage. We had a real big emphasis that day on, you know, just, just the safety of the school and whatnot, so they were there, we participated, we were with the middle school for that. And then what we did is we, we actually turned our attention to, after the classroom setup, and, oh, I just want to say, by the way, that they'll all be back next week, because we're going to do some additional training, and next week will, and then that will be followed with even more training. And another thing I just want to say is they're always so present, and they're always so available to us, and like Kelly Manning and whatnot, it's, it's wonderful to have that access to them and talk to them, and I feel like I have this sort of, kind of carte blanche opportunity to, like, what is it that you want to do? What do you want to focus on? Last year, we did what was called the Table Chop Drill, where we, we sort of worked as a, as a staff, what happened, like a scenario, these different scenarios, and we talked about if a, if a student was missing, what would we do? And it was, it was a great way to talk through these things and, and, and just, you know, just these different scenarios, who communicates, who does what. And I just feel here, like, one of the things, having access in this district, having access to Brett and Adam and Kelly Manning and the whole staff there, we're very, and we always have, we have a lot of meetings as well over the superintendent's office. It's a huge emphasis here, and I think it's a real kudos to the, to the district, so I just wanted to mention that. So what I also want to mention, just going back to our, our second day of training, we, we spent a lot of time, I actually had HMH come in and do our intro to Go Math training, because it's curriculum that we've had in the district for quite a while, but there's been a lot, there's been a lot of revisions, and they've introduced a new digital component to it, which is very supportive and provides interventions, and just, again, it's like updated version of this curriculum that's been around for quite some time. And, and so we had a training, because many of the staff over the years, there's been new people that have come in and haven't really had a proper training, I think, in a while. And then also, they were able to introduce this new digital component, which has just come in in the last couple of years. And it's a totally different curriculum, I think, than what it was when it was originally, whenever originally brought into the district. So the staff found that to be very, very beneficial. And let's see, also, in terms of what we're going to focus on, because the, the reason why I did this, another thing, is that we're actually having an increased focus on math this year. I mean, we obviously want to do well with ELA, and we are certainly not going to neglect it, but we felt like math was something that we could really dive into, and, and the kickoff of that was the, was the Go Math. And as a matter of fact, we had our first math committee meeting just this afternoon. So what I'm doing is, I had a number of staff members showed up today, and we're just looking at different ways that we as a team, as a staff, can just have math more front and center with the kids, more creative, make it more fun. I have some plans in place for our upcoming PD day as well, math-focused with the staff. So that's where an increase, you know, Rob had talked about some of those focus points. Here at the high school, math is going to be one of ours, and another one is going to be attendance, student attendance, so that's something that we're working on. Let's see, and then this coming week, if you, those of you that have children in the elementary school, we're going to have our first community meeting of the, of the year this Friday, and so we'll be rolling out and introducing to the kids some of the new things coming up. So if any of these are, if you have any kids at our school, when they come home, you can ask them what, what might be in store for them. And I also want to just thank, I want to thank the custodial staff as well, Jeff Collette. The school looks great. They were out working very early, very hard, hot days, but it looks, it's, it's just, it looks fantastic, and I felt like the building was in a good position to open, and, and I feel like we're off to a great start. But I'm very superstitious, so I, I don't want to be hitting the table the whole time I've been talking, but, but I feel like we're off to a good start. Any questions?
I just want to say, I think you guys do such a good job letting our students feel comfortable and confident walking into school all summer, talking to other families from other districts. I was shocked how many kids didn't know who their teacher was, didn't know who was going to be in their classes, and they were balls of stress. My kids were like, I know exactly where I'm going, I know who my teacher is, I know this person's in my class, like, they were good to go. It let them enjoy their summer more. Getting them to school was not a big deal. I know my kids are a little bit older now, and they're used to the routine, but I, even kids their age, I was shocked how many didn't have a step-up day, were frantic trying to go to a new middle school, those kinds of things. So I just, kudos to all of you. I think you do a fantastic job. Thank you for letting our students feel like this is their home, they know where they're going, they're excited for the first day of school, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Great. Yep.
Questions?
Again, kudos to, you know, the custodial staff, the fire police, and everybody working together, and you all working together as a cohesive team to make sure that our students all feel safe, supported in their schools as they come in. So thank you again.
And last but certainly not least, Ms. Buck.
Her very first time, though.
Yes, that's true. It's great to be here. It's been a wonderful start to the school year. We started a couple days before the staff came back with our paraprofessional training for our paraprofessionals, our ABAs, our Title Ones, where we were together for a couple of days, doing training about trauma-informed strategies, differentiating learning, managing anxiety, executive functioning, you know, that's a big one. And then we also had a day where our district BCBA came in and was doing training on behavior plans and data collection and those specifics. It was really nice to be able to come together like that before the school year started. The following week, we welcomed back all the staff, the teachers. We were able to have a district-wide Office of Special Education Student Support meeting, which was wonderful. I started with a video, Be a Champion by Rita Pearson. If you've never watched it, it's great, and it just talks about being a champion for a student, and being that person that believes in them, and how we don't know where they're coming through from when they walk through our doors, and what it means to be that. And I, I told staff throughout the year, when it starts to get busy, watch this video, remember this. We were able to really have a great meeting about continuing on with our compliance, implementing the systems and structures, the real importance of communicating with families, and what that looks like, and how we want to be responsive, those pieces. Added a little craziness to their day when I did a Pick Your Own Crazy Sock Bar. That's how we started out, so they were able to kind of pick their own crazy socks and kind of, just kind of set the tone that we're all in this together, and it was really nice to meet as a department. Working with Ms. Muller-Crone and Ms. Cozy, the special education coordinators, to support teachers, to make sure they have what they need to support students, to be able to do the great work that they're doing. And meeting with building principals, we've been walking through the buildings, we've been riding the buses, communicating with families, checking in with the staff, just to make sure everything is there. I love hearing the hustle and bustle of the students, when the bell's changing, or even just calling the buses at the end of the day or the morning announcements, it's so nice. This is why we're here, to be able to welcome everybody back and see the smiles. Very excited to share that we'll be starting Unified Sports this year. We're thrilled, we're very, very thrilled. Worked really hard with the athletic director, Ms. Barrard, and Rob at the high school, Mr. Ringette, and to really make sure, this was really important for us to have this. So we have our first Info Night on September 9th at 6:15, so I'll give that little plug while we're here. We welcome everybody to come out and learn about it. We're very thrilled to have this, and we're going to start with basketball and see how it goes. It's a great opportunity for, and to bring the community together. So we'll be making sure that the games, you know, people know when those are happening, and it's informed, and we're excited, so.
Any questions?
I'm thrilled that we're doing Unified Sports. I think it's fantastic. I think a lot of the kids that did the basketball, like when we did the basketball, they loved it, they had so much fun, and even like the siblings were going down, so I'm really excited to see all that. I just think it's great. I think it would be great to meet your coordinator, the newer coordinator, too.
Yes.
I think that would be really cool. I know you're working with the CPAC to try to make a schedule and get all that stuff. I think that's awesome. How, where do we stand for compliance as of today? Like, are we caught up, like, are we behind on meeting, well, obviously, do we have meetings from last year that haven't happened? Like, are our valuations up to date?
We are at compliance. Actually, had meetings over the summer with the tier focus monitoring people from Desi, and we are in compliance when it comes to the special education. and we are in compliance when it comes to the special education. And that's our goal is to keep that focus. Very proud to be able to say that. And that's due to the hard work of the coordinators, you know, the support of the superintendent, all the teachers. It takes a village, I truly believe that. And that was a focus too, when I was talking with the sped staff, when we welcomed back, is like, we're here, let's keep going. It's about moving forward, it's about the here and now, that's what we want to focus on. And that's really going to be the mindset.
Great, and I've heard people have gotten their liaison letters already, which is fantastic. So thank you guys for that, that's huge.
It's wonderful to hear. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
So just wrapping up, when people say, what do you guys do here all summer? This doesn't happen in a week, in a week and a half. This is what we do all summer, closing out the end of school year, we're doing all this prep work to get the school year started. And the more time and effort you put into it in July and August, the smoother the start of the school year is, and we saw that. So again, thank you to the principals, the coordinators, and everyone who made it such a smooth start for our kids these first four days of school. So by next week, summer will be in the rearview mirror. As someone who loves the summer, it pains me to say it, but you know, we're now moving forward and looking ahead. So thank you. Next on the agenda are my goals. Typically, we've done this over our summer retreat and we had such a rich and authentic and great dialogue that we didn't get time to dive into these goals, so I'm presenting them today. Let me just give you some context to what I did as a proposal. So typically, we pick one indicator under each of the four standards. What I did is I looked at the work that we'd done from those action, from those value and belief statements and those action steps and tried to synthesize and break that down to fit into each of the four standards. So for standard one, what I'm proposing under instructional leadership as a standard, is the instruction indicator. And that really talks about teaching and learning, right? And that's the core, the heart of what we do. And I listed for you what the proficient indicator says and what the exemplary, because that's really what we're striving for. Under number two, management and operations, the only thing that falls underneath there is SEL. I'm a firm believer, I have been and I will continue to be, SEL must every single solitary day in a year be at the focus of the work that we do. People say it's adding something to the plate, SEL is the plate. It's what holds everything together. Without the social, emotional wellbeing of our staff and our students, learning can't happen. So under standard two, the environment is the SEL indicator. Standard three, family and community engagement, we talked a lot about getting families back into schools and getting engaged. We launched the new website July 1. I have Dawn, my tech director, coming on the 17th to give a little snapshot and a little review of our school website. We all switched over to Instagram, we're very, very 2022 now with Instagram. I will be stealing a page from Mr. O'Brien's playbook and a week from Friday, I'll be at Better Bean from 8 to 10 to meet the community. So feel free, swing by, say hello, grab a cup of coffee, talk to me, learn a little bit about the district, whatever it is you want to do for those two hours, please swing by. So that'll be out in my newsletter on Friday and I'll be at Better Bean next Friday. Hope to be able to do it once every six to eight weeks. Did I say it wrong?
Coffee Bean.
Coffee Bean, sorry, sorry. I don't know why I said Better Bean.
I don't know what you're talking about. I'm like, what's a Better Bean?
I'm like, Main Street.
Main Street, Main Street, sorry. May I have anything in friends? Well, the friends was Central Park, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to have the principals present the first week of October. Two things for you. One is, I've asked each of them to come, three to five, authentic, true family engagement strategies to get people into the buildings over the course of the year. We already do things like open houses, parent-teacher conferences, games, but what are some different things we can do outside the box to get people into our buildings and do it authentically, all right? A couple of years ago, we had an art fair here at school, we had another one a year or two after that in town, and we had 100, 150 parents show up for the art fair. Science fair is a great way to get people inside the buildings. Amy Stan does a phenomenal job every June doing in our fair here at the end of the day, usually does it one of the Wednesdays in June for school committee meetings and we always get people in there. So I'm going to have principals present those, the first week of October. And they also teased out Rob and Bob, that partnership that we can try to build between the middle school and the high school and what their ideas are for that. So again, building upon that family and community engagement to get people in the buildings. And finally, under professional culture, the commitment to high standards, a lot of things we talked about at that retreat were things like data, student agency, professional development, collaboration, expectations, reflective practice. And that all fits under that commitment to high standards. So that's really why I picked those four indicators under each of those standards for my evaluation. Under the goals, there's four goals. We had six buckets. The last two buckets, one was fiscal responsibility and I forget what the other, and operations. I left those out of my goals because that's something Ms. Landry could be doing. So the first goal is around the first bucket, which is academic excellence. And the goal will be to lead the Douglas Public Schools in improving instruction consistency, curriculum alignment, and student outcomes by ensuring that. And a lot of this comes from the work that we did at that retreat. So once again, making sure those maps are vertically and horizontally aligned to state standards and implemented in classrooms with fidelity. We finally have our curriculum minus ELA in math in the middle school because they have new textbooks upgraded and into Rubicon Atlas is posted on the website for people to look at. But now, how are we going to continue to revise that, but more importantly, how are we going to make sure this is a living, breathing document inside classrooms? Continuing with data-informed instructions, we heard a lot of stuff. I was shocked when we met because I started the data push five years ago when I got here and people hated the word data. And one thing that came out of that retreat from the staff that were here was how much work we've done with data and how important data is used to drive instruction. So we're really, truly using it. The SEL piece of integrating it into all classrooms, we're getting ready to do our Panorama Survey the end of this month for our pre-data. And then professional development for all staff with the focus around curriculum, data, and SEL integration. The second goal is around SEL and it's again, providing that safe and supportive environment. One message that came through loud and clear with staffers, they need more professional development around trauma-informed practices and de-escalation strategies. Came through loud and clear. So it's going to be a focus this year for comment planning time, for our in-service days that we did a little bit last week in October and January in staff meetings, really giving people some additional tools around trauma-informed decision-making. And then another thing that came through loud and clear is making sure that each school has clear and consistent behavioral expectations. When kids know what to expect, when kids know the rules, right? And not just compliance rules, but when kids know what to expect inside schools, it just makes it easier for everyone. The third goal is around professional culture and it's again, cultivating a professional culture in Douglas that promotes collaboration, accountability, and continuous growth by, again, having those sessions around reflective practice and collaboration, implementing clear expectations and accountability structures for staff and for students, and using the evaluation system that we have to help contribute towards measurable student growth. And then the fourth goal is around the community engagement piece, and I already touched on that, but again, it's a couple of things. One, increasing the opportunities for families to authentically engage with students, streamlining our communication home with families. We have the website, which now gives us the ability to tweet, no, not to tweet, I'm sorry, to Instagram, do notifications, messages, and emails, but also, so we have that ability. But we also need to make sure that we're using one consistent platform. Is it Google Classroom? Is it something else? But we want to make sure that we're using one consistent platform for families and we're making, and what I want to make sure is that consistent platform, we also give parents the support to learn how to use it at home. And then finally, providing some workshops for families on enhancing parent education and digital literacy. I'm going to meet with Dawn later on this week to have parents come in and if they haven't downloaded the app for the website, how to do that. If you haven't downloaded the app for Power School, how can you do that? And how to navigate the website and the app. If five people come, that's great. If 65 people come, that's awesome. If no one comes, at least we've offered that opportunity to staff, to families to come in. And those are the four goals. I know that's a lot to digest. I don't know if the committee wants to talk about it and maybe come back at the 17th and vote on it. If you want to go back and look at what we did for our retreat, at those value and belief statements and do that, I'm open to anything. I know it's a lot of information, this is important work, this guides what we do as a district from now until the end of the school year. So I just want to make sure you've had time to process it, digest it, and be able to come back or be ready now to ask questions.
Thoughts?
Yeah, I'm ready to vote. I'm ready to vote. I mean, I think we did discuss a lot of this in the retreat and I know that you reviewed everything that we went over. I think this is a really great narrative and sums it up. You know, it doesn't capture the feeling of being in the room with everybody and working together, right? Which is just too bad you can't just bottle that up. But I think that this, this sounds great to me. I don't need to think about it any further, but if someone does, I can wait.
I actually think it does a really good job of bottling it up and I can't believe this came from a million sticky notes of us like throwing stuff into the air and trying to condense and really focus it. So I think this does an excellent job of capturing what we discussed.
Absolutely, agreed.
And you can already hear it in a lot of what they've been talking about.
True. Yeah.
So I appreciate the candor. Like I said, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the superintendent's goals and evaluation for the 2025 and 2026 year.
So moved.
Motion made by Beth, seconded by?
Becky.
Seconded by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Awesome.
And I'll post this tomorrow or the next day on the website, the new website for people to be able to look at and see.
So I have one go back. We still have the superintendents from last year where we had to go back and redo, yeah, the data on the student learning goal and the professional practice goal. So if people, I will resend it out. If people could please try to get that back to be by next week so that I can actually present that part of it and I can get that signed so we can make sure that that's on the record too because there's.
Do you want it on the 17th or on the 1st?
Whatever works for the schedule.
We, we, will you be ready in two weeks to do it or?
I think so.
Okay, I'll add it until September 17th.
Pretty, pretty easy. The only thing is we need to make a student learning goal and a professional practice goal. So we can think about that because that's probably what we have in there.
So what I, so I did a little, let me just write this down for next week so I don't forget. I didn't put those in those buckets because what I tried to do was capture the work that we did. I can relabel these four goals and do one professional practice, one student learning, if it, just to make it easy. So I'll outline that before I push it out tomorrow. I just did goal one, goal two, goal three, goal four, to capture the work that we did and they all kind of encompass a little bit of it, but I'll delineate it a little bit more carefully when I.
If you could do that, because like I said, this becomes my template to do the evaluation to set it up, so. So I'll email that out to you all to make sure, I think I have, if you don't have from Lauren, the results that we have, it was a big deck. That was the first week in June that she presented it, so. Awesomeness.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Moving on to this school committee and subcommittee accounts payable report.
That's me. All right, so on August 21st, 2025, warrants 08 SCH 26 HS 26-01, seven batches in the total amount of $166,029.39, signed by myself with no irregularities. Secondly, on August 28th, 2025, warrant number 08 SCH 26, five batch numbers for a total of $129,999.75, signed by myself with no irregularities.
Thanks. Moving on to the consent agenda and the August 20 meeting minutes. If no one has any issues with the meeting minutes, I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve, Becky?
Motion approved by Becky, seconded by?
Meg.
Seconded by Meg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Abstained.
Thank you. That's abstained. And then approve the tree trimming.
So just on a little funny side note, the office staff was running around talking about tree trimming the past three, four days. Why are we talking about Christmas? And they kept on talking about tree trimming. So with that little joke, I'll turn it over to Ms. Landry to talk a little bit about what the request is from the committee.
Thanks. Kind of every year, I think we have to come to you, we need to clean up, clean up some of the grounds. If you've been driving around and kind of see a few trees hanging, so we are asking kind of normal, normal yearly business activity to keep our grounds safe for the community and for the students. We are asking to trim back and cut down some trees. I did include a couple of pictures and what the pictures were are kind of the pictures of the trees that were obstructing the cameras that were put up. So we really do need to kind of cut some of those back so that we can get better views. A couple of our shots, this is not, don't be alarmed, it's not all of the cameras, just a few of them. So at the high school, we have a few trees that were just dead and a few obstructing the cameras. At the elementary school, same situation. And then one final one would be across the cross-country trail, there is a dead fallen tree. Conservation is aware of it and conservation did give us the okay to go ahead and remove that tree because it is a safety hazard for the runners. So the financial impact, we did get a quote to remove, I think in total it was about 12 trees for $2,500, which was a reasonable estimate for a local contractor. They did a lot of work for the town as well, so they're fully aware. This, it's no additional financial impact, we will put it against the grounds budget. So I am just looking for a motion to have approval to trim the trees, not with Christmas lights.
Not with Christmas lights.
Motion made by? Motion made by Beth, seconded by?
Julia.
Seconded by Julia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting in the pictures, that's helpful to me.
Picture, when you look at the picture, like, okay, this makes sense.
It's safety. At the end of the day, it's safety. So you've got to do it, just like we do it in our homes. You have to do it. Moving on to Mr. Ringett, I think you're going to come up and talk to us again, the sole survivor.
All right. Hello again, it's that time of year.
It is.
Where we start with requests from the school committee for our athletics teams and our music program. So I think I'll start with out-of-state approval for a state contest as far as our athletic teams go. So obviously, we live on the border of Connecticut and Rhode Island and we sit here and sometimes we have invitationals that might happen in either of those states. That would be closer and more cost-effective than, let's say, going further out west or even closer towards Boston to participate in. Sometimes the students will see better competitions there, they'll see kind of like more of their own ilk, if you will, kind of competing in those areas, whether it be track and field, golf, or any other sport. But those are the two that are most common for us to actually have those competitions. So in order to save time as we go through this year and possible missed opportunities for any athletic events when they're occasionally rescheduled due to weather or other, we are seeking a year-long permission to participate in preseason, regular, and postseason official events that are out of state.
Any questions? Be looking for a motion. Be looking for a motion.
Move to approve permission for the Douglas, for the DHS Athletics Program at DHS to participate in regularly scheduled matches and games held out of state for the 2025-2026 year.
Motion made by Beth, seconded by?
Meg.
Seconded by Meg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Subsequently, it's not all about athletics. Sorry. The music program gets their spotlight as well. So the music program regularly competes in parades. That's usually how their marching band will compete. They also have various other showcases throughout the year. Some of the things that they've participated in the past is like a Rhode Island Autumn Fest, sometimes St. Patrick's Day Parade. That's over state lines again because we live so close to the other two states. So again, in order to save time, similar to athletics, and avoid any possible missed opportunities for that group of students, I am looking for a year-long approval for the music group to compete out of state as well.
Any questions from anybody? Be looking for a motion.
I move to approve permission for the music program, marching band, concert band, jazz band, and chorus at the high school to participate in parades and concerts held out of state for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion made by Beth, seconded by?
Julia.
Seconded by Julia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you so much.
Greatly appreciated.
Best of luck to everybody.
Thank you.
Last but not least is the School Business and Operations Manager Report.
Thank you. I have one short reclassification that I was looking to have approved, and it is just moving $472 from the sped instructional supply to the sped testing assessment supply account.
Any questions? Be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2026 reclassification number one in the amount of $472.08.
Motion made by Julia, seconded by?
Becky.
Seconded by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Good to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other topics not anticipated?
Just not for me, no.
I know we are going to probably have at next school committee meeting revisit the topic where the gentleman came and presented to us about the elementary school. I'd like to hear from the community members at large, as well as from Mr. Hayes, because it's his school, right, that's being impacted from this. But I think Ms. Socia should be part of that process, too, as well, because it could trickle down. But we welcome that. We welcome community involvement. So we are going to enter into executive session to discuss the strategy in respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting that would be detrimental to the effect of the bargaining and litigation position of our government body and to conduct collective bargaining. We will not come back into open session. We will adjourn from our executive session. I need a roll call vote to enter into executive session.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Seconded by?
Meg.
Seconded by Beth. Roll call vote to go into executive session starting at 7:42 PM on September 3rd.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Meg Grauzen, aye.
Becky DiMarco, aye.
Julia Laggerholm, aye.
Heather Moore, aye. Thank you so much, everybody.
Good night.